Good evening, everybody. My name is Rick Bonilla, and I want to welcome everybody here to our first open public meeting in 25 months. And I'm so happy that it's such a great, huge public gathering. Thank you all for being here. I have the good fortune of being the mayor this year, and I'm very proud to be able to be hosting this event tonight. So I want to ask, first I'll call the meeting to order, and I want to ask everybody to please join me, face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and remove your hats. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez is absent due to a planned vacation. Councilmember Gothelz is absent due to a planned vacation. Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Not on vacation.
Mayor Bonilla.
Always here. Thank you very much. So as I was saying, we're excited to be back here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person and still choose to participate virtually. We have many different ways now that people can partake of the public process. So for those attending in person, there are three options for you to sign up to speak. Number one, you will complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk, and the slips can be found at the back of the room and in the lobby. Number two, you could sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber and/or scan the QR code to sign up, and that code is located on a, there's a paper posted back there with the QR code on it, and you can just sign in and register to speak from that. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in by telephone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options will be available until the public comment is closed. So with that, Madam Clerk, we'll be moving on to the first item. First item is ceremonial. It is the commemoration of Jewish American Heritage Month, and we have a proclamation here in honor of the Jewish American Heritage Month, which I'm going to read right now. Whereas on April 20th, 2006, Jewish American History Month was established through the bipartisan efforts of Representative Debbie Wasserman Schultz of Florida and the late Senator Arlen Specter of Pennsylvania, and recognized by presidential proclamation by former President George W. Bush. And whereas 350 years of history has given us names like Albert Einstein, Garrett E. Reisman, and Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And whereas Jewish Americans bring vibrant culture and life to our diverse community, and as we celebrate the religious, cultural, political, economic, and intellectual contributions Jewish Americans have made throughout the history, we recognize the prejudice and discrimination that Jewish communities continue to confront today. Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month celebrates the hard-fought progress won through the struggle and sacrifice of Jewish Americans, and we rededicate ourselves to building a world where diversity is cherished and faith is protected. And whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is a time to reaffirm our commitment to rejecting ignorance and intolerance and condemning antisemitism wherever it exists. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of San Mateo hereby proclaims the month of May 2022 as Jewish American History Month. Be it further resolved, I call upon all residents to celebrate Jewish Americans who have contributed immeasurably to the fabric of American history, culture, science, education, social justice, and to the many aspects of our local community. On today, May 2nd, 2022, signed by me, the Mayor of Rick Bonilla, and we have a member here from the Jewish Community Relations Council, Julia Abramson, to speak and accept this proclamation. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me this evening. My name is Julia Abramson, and I serve as the Community Relations Associate for the Jewish Community Relations Council. JCRC is the public affairs organization of the Jewish community, representing over 50 Jewish organizations and synagogues across the Bay Area. On behalf of JCRC and our member organizations, thank you for your effort to adopt this resolution recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month. I want to specifically thank Mayor Rick Bonilla for working with JCRC to author and adopt this resolution. During Jewish American Heritage Month, we celebrate and reflect on over 350 years of Jewish contributions to American society. Here in the San Mateo region, we estimate that 7% of the population is Jewish, and we're proud that Jewish Americans continue to be leaders in various spaces, including here on this council. While today is a time to celebrate Jewish contributions, we must also recognize that there are many who seek to harm our community. According to a recent study, the rate of antisemitic incidents across the nation reached an all-time high last year, and the San Mateo region is not immune from this hate. We have recently tracked Nazi-related graffiti in parks, flyers blaming Jews for COVID and denying the Holocaust, and rising online hate targeting our students on platforms like TikTok and Snapchat. So during this Jewish American Heritage Month, not only must we celebrate Jewish Americans, but we must also rededicate ourselves to fighting antisemitism and hate. JCRC believes that education around Jewish identity is a vital tool in order to combat this rising hate. Our Here I Am series is a new proactive online campaign to uplift the diversity of the Jewish identity and explain our community experiences with hate. I want to thank Councilmember Amarin Sli for joining this campaign last year, and I want to encourage everyone to go to hereiamstories.org to learn more, watch videos, review the resources, and record your own video of support. JCRC and the Jewish community appreciate your support, and we look forward to continuing to partner with the council and broader community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Abramson. Well, next we move on to the ceremonial item, which is in honor of our municipal, professional municipal clerk, and we're going to honor her with Municipal Clerks Week. So here is the proclamation. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. And now therefore, I, Rick Bonilla, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, do hereby recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Patrice Olds, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Dated today, May 2nd, Rick Bonilla, Mayor of the City of San Mateo.
If I may, through the mayor, I wanted to mention, because I think it's important for everyone in the room to know, you know, San Mateo is one of the best places in the world to live, and one of the reasons is because of all of you and all of your children. But also, we have an award-winning, nationally-recognized city clerk, who is Patrice Olds, and so we are among the best tonight here.
Thank you.
And of course, her staff. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you all again.
So on behalf of the city clerk's staff, we're a small but mighty Department of Four. Erin Fellers, Assistant to the City Clerk. You may have met Deputy City Clerk Joan Diskin in the hall, and then we have a management analyst, oh, back there. And we, nobody does this in a vacuum. It's always a team effort. And so I wanted to just mention that, that we have the best, best city clerk team in the world, and we love serving the community. So thank you for giving us that honor.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you very much. And on now to the real big event that everybody's here for tonight. This is going to be recognition of the high schools and our four local high schools and their 4.0 grade point average graduate, graduating students for this year. So I think the city clerk is going to call in Aragon High School first. Is that who we have? And we have Deputy Mayor Diane Pappan here to help recognize the students.
Okay. Can do. Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, Deputy Mayor Pappan, council members, and all of our guests and family members here tonight. My name is Valerie Arbizu. I'm the principal at Aragon High School, and tonight it's my pleasure to bring 42 valedictorians.
Wow.
I mean, this is a really big deal. These are students who have persisted and been resilient through distance learning. They got to shut down the school, they got to reopen the school, they got to continue, and they all finished their four high school years with a 4.0. Yeah. Woo! So I think my favorite part of this event, which I've never been to before, so I'm thankful and honored to be here tonight. My favorite part of this is that we have 42 valedictorians at Aragon High School, but they all have something a little different. Everyone has a different hobby, everyone has a different focus, everyone's doing a little something different as they're graduating from high school. And so they really do represent the best of what Aragon has to offer in terms of our athletes, our academics, our writers, our journalists, our dramatists, our, all of our thespians, all of the kids who we have here. And some of them needed some support, and some of them did this all on their own. But their families are here tonight, and so I wanted to thank you all for as much support as you could offer these students as well. And with that, let's recognize the kids. So I have Simran Ball. I have Sukie Beely, who is not able to be here. Genevieve Begu. Anusha Chatterjee. Catalina Correll. Wilson Duwan. Alonso Gomez. Alexander Cow. Ella Klein. Caitlin Lau. Nathan Lim. Tristan Liu. Mina Mittler. Lauren Mock. Jack Murphy. Claire Shantani. Brendan Sinclair. Amiti Smila. I'll get that right, Amitai, I swear. Okay. Paul Struble. Sakshi Towardhi. Towardhi. Evan Wong. Farah Yi. Amber Yay. And Abby Yin. Yep. Good job.
That's not hers, though.
Yep, we'll get it. Congratulations, Aragon.
Okay, we're going to take a photo, so.
Do you want to do it there?
They look like they're right there.
You guys.
Because we'll do it at the same time.
They're all lined up.
It's fine. I think that's a great spot.
Okay, we'll make this way. One, two, three. Aragon!
Aragon!
Yeah, you need it. You deserve it. Good job. Well done.
Follow directions.
We're getting the flag out. We're going to have Principal, yeah, let's hear it for Hillsdale. And we have Principal Sarah Prensky-Pomeranz, and I will be joining her momentarily.
Hi, I'm Sarah Prensky-Pomeranz. I'm one of the assistant principals at Hillsdale High School, and I am honored to announce the valedictorians of Hillsdale High School's class of 2022. As you know, valedictorians are students who have maintained an unweighted 4O GPA throughout all of their high school years. Students often juggle family responsibilities, extracurriculars, and academics, and still earn all As in every class they've taken in high school, often taking classes that represent the most academically rigorous our school has to offer. The valedictorians of the class of 2022 did all that in a pandemic that has rocked their high school experience. We are so proud of all they have achieved, persevered through, and of the footprints they are sure to make in our community and beyond. It is my honor to announce the valedictorians of Hillsdale High School. And we have quite a few joining us on Zoom, so I will be reading all of their names. To start, Juliana Alioto. Elizabeth Briner. Kristen Conliff. Gavin Davis. Arannie Dellis. Aditi Dewan. Brooke Dawn. Stephanie Elgard. Lauren Fuji. Zoe Grinspan. Sophia Heath. Amelia Hernandez. Eilish Kasane. Alexander Lang. Zachary Leighton. Brian Lynn. Claire Lucy. Angela Matthews. Christopher Monzon. Ria Mulkerens. Isabella Murray. Ryan Neal. Nadine Noak. Isabel Ortega. Natalia Ortega. Cameron Penn. Amy Ramirez. Kristen Rank. Trey Reyes. Alena Roser. Andrea Salcedo. Nina Schmier. Teddy Seligman. Holly Scheck. Madeline Skonek. Anthony Tonini. Carly Tosun. Erin Olinovsky. Erin Whirl. Evelyn Wong. Kristi Yi. Kayla Yi. Shashen Yu. And I forgot, Tej Sakumaran. Congratulations, Hillsdale High School.
Whoops.
There you go. That's really good. And make sure you're looking between the two shoulders of the people in front of you so we can see you. Well.
Oh, yeah. Now it's my turn with the hands on. Oh yeah, now it's my turn with the hands on. Congratulations, everyone. And now, for San Mateo High School, and we have Principal Yvonne Shu.
Hi, good evening. It is my privilege to be here tonight to recognize a class of students so distinguished, resilient, talented. I can't say enough, I'm getting goosebumps when I talk about them because I am so proud of who they have become, all of the things that they have overcome. They left San Mateo High School as sophomores in March 2020. Some of them might have come back last spring, and they all came back as a class, you know, this current year. And we, I think, have had a lot of fun celebrating and trying to bring back some normalcy after some tumultuous times and trying times. Everything from dances and concerts, and I'm sure you've heard about the infamous prom, but I don't think any of us would have done anything differently because they have done without for such a long time, and it was about time to let them have fun and be kids again. And so, I wouldn't change a thing. And so, we have so much to be proud of. We have 22 valedictorians this year, 17 of which are here today. Many of them are in AP classes, National Merit Scholars. They just finished performing in a dance concert last week and last weekend in our spring drama production, and so, and some of them have a concert coming up on Wednesday night, too. So, it's a very busy time, and so, without further ado, here are the San Mateo Class of 2022 valedictorians. Becky Alex. Oh, it is Annabeth. Ann Beth, sorry. She goes by Becky. No? Lucy Ballinger. Emily Burke. Alicia Chan, who's not here. William Ding. Adam Ferris. Alyssa Higuchi. Lindsay Wong. Hannah Lei. Annabelle Lee. Samidha Mishra. Yvette Morales. Mayank Patil. Ruhi Putta. Nicholas Saifri. Sarah Suin. Michelle Sun. Charlotte Tan. Chloe Van Voorhis. Allison Warren. Megan White. And Joshua Wolf Graham. Congratulations, Bearcats. Go Bearcats! Yes, I'll write it, you want me to write it on this? Erin got her name. Show them proud in front. And then, you guys say to me the address. Yeah, come on in closer. Make sure you're looking in between, don't cover your face with the thing. Fold it behind. Diane, can you come in a little bit? Okay, one, two, three. San Mateo High School, looking good! Here they come.
His son does that? Yeah.
And now, we're going to welcome the 4.0 grade point average students from Sarah High School. We're gonna have Principal Charles McGrath presenting, along with the help of Deputy Mayor Diane Pappan.
Thank you all so much. Good evening to our friends on City Council. As neighbors on 20th Street, it's good to be able to see you all in person as our boys drive back and forth every day. It's my extreme honor and privilege tonight to present 15 of our valedictorians from Sarah High School who met the requirements for graduation, being enrolled for all four years at Sarah, taking an exemplary course of study, which includes the Honors Program, AP Program, as well as being nominated by members of the class out of this group of 15, three of whom go on to speak at three different commencement ceremonies at Sarah High School. So, one of our gentlemen's already spoken at the Mother-Son Mass, another one of our graduates will be speaking at the Senior Awards Ceremony, and then our commencement address will be at graduation on May 21st. Each of these young men demonstrate for us daily what it means to be people of faith, wisdom, service, community, and leadership, which are the five pillars that fall under Sarah's mission statement, as well in our Mission and Brotherhood Program, men who of integrity, respect, inclusion, and compassion. So each day, each of these young men demonstrate those activities. So I'm honored to present the awards tonight to the boys who are present, but certainly list all 15 seniors who qualify for this acknowledgement. So first, we have Eric Enya. Benjamin Teniski. Jack Collins. Mohamed El Badri, who will give the senior address at the award ceremony. Lucas Kramer. William Calda, who gave the address at the Mother-Son Mass. Diego Luis. Enoch Mun. Cole Norton. Connor O'Quigley. William Wu. Varun Popli, who will give the commencement address at graduation on May 21st. Calvin Quinn. Nathaniel Valdez. And Samuel White.
Can you guys squeeze in a little? And if you want to open up your certificates and hold them in front of you, you can do that if you'd like. And... Go Padres!
Oh my gosh, nice to meet you.
Thank you. And now, we will proceed to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, ordinance adoption, military equipment policy. Item number five, Community Development Block Grant 2022-23 Annual Action Plan Adoption. Item number six, Temporary Accounting Services Agreement. Item number seven, Indian Springs Park Restroom Remodel Contract. Item number eight, City Hall Staff Restrooms Remodel Contract. Item number nine, 480 East Fourth Avenue Grant of Easements. Item number 10, COVID-19 Declaration of Emergency Termination.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And now, let me ask, is there any member of the council who would like to pull any of these items separately for discussion? Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's any member of the public who would like to pull one of these items for discussion. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public?
We have no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
No hand raised, and no slips have been turned in, so we will bring it back to the council. The mayor will be eager to receive a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee. Yes. Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Yes.
Mayor Bonina.
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And now, we're on to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is a time when members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents the council from taking action on any item not on tonight's agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda if needed, which looks like it's unlikely tonight. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I have one hand raised. Jimmy Apfel. Please go.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Jimmy Apfel, and I'm proud to serve as a government and community relations coordinator for Bloom Energy, a clean and resilient energy company founded right here in Silicon Valley with nearly 800 local employees, and currently hiring for more than 300 additional advanced manufacturing careers. Over the past two years, we've learned more than ever the vital role of our frontline hospital and healthcare workers, all putting our health before their own throughout the COVID-19 crisis. In recognition for their selfless work, Bloom Energy hosted the inaugural Stars in Strides Community Run last year and raised over a quarter of a million dollars to benefit the Valley Medical Center Foundation. I'm here tonight to ask you to come and build on our success on Saturday morning, July 2nd, for our second annual Stars in Strides Community Run, to support and celebrate our frontline hospital workers and the patients they serve. Our ambitious goals for the second annual Stars in Strides Community Run will be much more attainable with your help and participation. Our financial goal will be to raise and donate $350,000 to the Valley Medical Center Foundation, as they support three county hospitals and 14 health clinics to provide healthcare to more than 1 million of our neighbors annually. Our participation goal will be 2,500 paying participants in the Armature Systems 10K Run, Silicon Valley Bank 5K Run, or the HP Incorporated Kids On Run. A third, our volunteer goal will be 400 caring volunteers on pre-race or race day to further ensure that our participants have volunteers on pre-race or race day to further ensure that our participants have a fun, safe, and healthy experience. We have three requests tonight. First, please register for yourself and your family at starsinstridesrun.com. For our elected leaders, please sign up under the California Water Service Elected Official and Executive 5K Challenge. Second, please reach out to your own database of community members. We have a sample text you can use to consider, to make it easy. And third, we would be honored to work with you or your professional staff to be included in any online communications between now and race day. Over the past two years, we have realized just how critical healthcare workers are to our communities, and we now have an opportunity to gather, to celebrate, and support them on July 2nd. Please join us and spread the word throughout your communities. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Apfel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no additional speakers.
Thank you. Seeing no additional speakers, we will close the public comment period and bring it back for the final order of business tonight, which is reports and announcements. Do we have any reports and announcements from our esteemed staff? Seeing none, oh, do we have one? Yes. Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, just very briefly, at the prior council meeting, the issue of lawsuit that was brought by the district attorney's offices for San Francisco and Los Angeles was brought up, and I mentioned I would report back as to what I discussed with San Mateo County District Attorney's Office. My understanding is they're considering their various options at this point. I don't have much more to report than that, but I'm happy to report back at a subsequent council meeting as I find out more from them.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. I'm seeing no other commenters over there. How about Councilmember Lee?
I have a couple of announcements. I wanted to acknowledge that it is API History Month, and so if we don't already have a recognition on the agenda for next month, I would love to consider putting one on. And this is actually a really historic moment. Yesterday, the first of the month, we convened all the API electives in the Bay Area and had over 100 electives together for the first time in history. And, and as many of you know, API, the API population is the least represented among elected officials across all racial demographics. And so it was very significant for all of us to come together under the auspices of the API Coalition. And, and I have a snazzy jacket that, that I'm, that I wanted to show appreciation for, that each one of us got, which is the API Coalition jacket that we all walked away with. So there'll be hopefully some, some more news and movement on, on that front, but I, I was hoping that we could agree to put a recognition on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yes, I think we should.
Great. And, and then my other issue is that I wanted to raise, raise the scheduled agenda item for discussion in the next meeting. I understand we have two pretty heavy agenda items. Number one, discussing our revenue options, and then number two, the housing element. And with a sort of a light attendance at this meeting, I think it's really important to have all five council members together to convene on really critical issues. And, and also, we've heard from the community that the housing element and housing crisis is something of very critical concern. And sometimes, in a, in a larger meeting or heavier agenda, things get sort of pushed out. And so I wanted to inquire if there was an appetite to hold a special meeting for the housing element agenda item, which will allow all of us to be together, because I won't be traveling, number one. And, and then also, we can do some more targeted outreach and have a dedicated meeting really focused in on, on the issue at hand. And so I wanted to just, you know, throw that out there as something I think we could consider that would achieve the purposes of the kind of dedicated outreach that we strive for, having full participation of all council, and also having a meeting structure that starts earlier and ends earlier, which allows for better access and opportunity for folks to attend and participate. So that, the suggestion is to move the agenda item of the housing element from the next agenda to a special meeting. And I understand from the city manager that the soonest would be the 22nd, and it wouldn't delay the timeline.
I think the soonest we could do would be the...
23rd.
Monday, the 23rd.
Right.
And I think that date is, right now, looks like a good date, but we would want to poll all of the council members to determine if, if Monday, the 23rd worked for everyone.
It works for me.
Quick look here.
Yeah, I, I may not have everything in front of me, so I'll have to get back to... I think it should be fine, but there's one other area I have to check.
Yeah, I'm looking clear for Monday, May 23rd.
Okay, thank you. So we will poll the other council members to determine if that date works for them. And if we can get all five here on that date, we will reschedule for Monday, May 23rd, and with a start time of 6:00. And if it doesn't work for the other council members, we will put some other dates out there.
Thank you so much for the flexibility.
Thank you very much. And then, seeing no other reports, I would like to simply make a very broad statement. As many people know, I'm very deeply concerned about climate change and about efforts that we can make to further electrify and make our built environment more efficient. I want to urge everybody to look into the programs that Peninsula Clean Energy is offering. Even if you live in an apartment, there's a program, there's a way that you can find to join with what we need, billions of people on this planet, to pull for making positive efforts to save our climate and save this earth. So that's my wish, that's my statement. Thank you all very much. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting.